Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Doran Becker is excused.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next up is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Public comment on any item that is not listed on our agenda tonight. Now would be the time for you to share your comments with the council. And we did clarify that if you wanted to bring up something about cannabis, it's not technically on our agenda tonight, so you can do that even though we'll be getting a subcommittee report out later tonight, giving you the option to go now if you'd like. Or it could be something totally unrelated one. Please.
Maybe.
Please.
But just to...
Just come on up and share.
Just to be sure I understand.
And we'll shut you down if we need to.
Okay. I mean, we appreciated the committees' meeting that we went to and we're looking forward to hearing the committee's report and everything. We just wanted to, I guess, reiterate that we believe that any initiative should be as simply worded as possible so that the voters don't get confused with what's being proposed and that we get as more, the most turnout as we possibly can on the initiative. And that's not speaking pro or con on the issue. And we also believe that, if possible, you know, a citizens' group working with whoever is going to come up with the wording of the initiative and everything, it would be good to hear from that group, I think, if I were a councilman kind of thing. And that's kind of it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to share a public comment on anything not on our main agenda? Yes.
I'm kind of a Johnny come lately here because all these things have been discussed. But in receiving the Yountville Sun this week, there were two subjects that have been mentioned so much in the past months. And the first one was, of course, about the cannabis. And most people have said in the paper pretty much what I feel, which is that having not even a drugstore in town, for instance, I don't see why people couldn't go to Napa to get their cannabis if they feel that they need to get it. I have no understanding of why it's, other than a commercial venture that would benefit certain individuals and, of course, maybe the town financially in the long run. I sat there and thought about it, and it just didn't seem to add to me an opening of a door to cohesiveness of the town. And then the next thing that was a quandary is, again, the school, of course, is being brought up. And I, and my heart just kind of seized up when I saw that again because something told me I had been a negligent citizen to not speak up before. And these two items are related to me because here we are in a very prosperous valley, in a county that is doing very well, that also has a lot of immigrants we depend on. And one of our founding fathers' greatest important wishes were that we educate, this is why we have public education, our citizenry so that they can be good citizens. And in our current events, class at the town hall, I mentioned something. We were talking about the creeping various things that take away from, that led us into World War II, for instance, and in lots of other conflicts, was fascism, et cetera, and how subtly these things crept in. And I made the comment, I think our civics classes need to be improved. And someone said, well, we don't even have civic classes anymore. And I was stunned because I had no idea. And I thought, here we are, talking about a few amendments, as if our heart and soul were in it, and the whole Constitution depends on an educated citizenry. So why haven't we, with all this fortunate wealth that we have and possess here, defended that higher than anything else, that should be a higher priority than anything else here? I don't understand why we couldn't try to have a magnet school, which is a public school that they do have in big cities, many big cities, that are so well-staffed that people sign up to try to get in, and they have a lottery. My granddaughter went to a high school in Los Angeles like this. There's a lottery to get into the school because everyone knows you're going to get a wonderful education there. It just seems to me that I looked at these two things and thought, well, what are our priorities and where is the heart of the future of this, well, starting with us, with our town? And then, from then on out into the rest of the country, we have a chance to defend something that's so basic and so important to our Constitution. And it just seems to me that our priorities need, I don't, maybe, it's just me, that we need to think of them a little differently here in town.
Thank you. And could you offer your, just so Michelle has your name on the record, if you get to share verbally?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Wendy Robbins Vogel, and I live on Creek Street.
Thanks.
Robbins Vogel. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak during this public comment portion? No? Okay. We'll move on to our consent calendar, then. We have five items, six A through E. Are there any questions or is there action on the consent calendar?
I'll move approval to consent calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second on the consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Next up, we are going to have a presentation from just about all of our staff on 2020 technology that we use here at the town of Yountville. Steve is getting out an award, which is always a good way to start a presentation. We're going to start with Steve Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. First, before we head into the technology update, I had the distinct pleasure of receiving on behalf of the town an award by CALICMA. CALICMA is the International City County Management Association, and CALICMA is the California chapter. The California chapter has really been focused on how to help prepare our workforce. In other words, how do we attract talent, retain talent in today's environment? And some of you have perhaps attended some of the work sessions that they've had at various league events and activities. CALICMA put together the Talent Initiative Report, which basically said that frankly, a lot of the things that we've traditionally done in local government, we needed to reevaluate and think differently because it wasn't going to help us attract competent talent, keep them. And they put some ideas forward and kind of a checklist of best practices. And they implemented an award system this year for both a small city, a medium city, and a large city. So the Talent Initiative focused on things such as developing your internal talent. In other words, do we take a look at people in our organization, invest, develop them, encourage them to grow? And I'm saying that because we actually do. Do you also work on internships? Do you work on bringing people into the profession, giving them an exposure? And as you know, we've had interns as well as our management fellow program. Do we look at our recruiting materials? Do we look at trying to not just sell the conventional job description, blah, 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 but do we talk about the values, the org culture, the community, the things that we're doing, and the work? So we've reinvented a bit how we're advertising and marketing and looking at that. And more importantly, how we develop an organization where people, you know, we happen to think we're a pretty special organization, but we're a great organization for some people and not such a great organization for others. And by being able to explain who you are, what you are, and what you're looking for. Anyway, I want to call up Julie Baldia and our four department heads because I'd like to present them with this on behalf because this really is about our team developing the culture of the organization. And it's especially challenging as a small organization because in many cases, we're doing this while we're doing other things. And it's really quite an honor in our backyard to be presented this. This thing's heavy, I will point out.
So everybody get on up to the podium. Samantha, this time I'm going to take the picture. Not sure how this fits with the technology update in the background, but...
Put that award in the middle here.
And lower that microphone, please. There we go. All right.
There's no click like they used to.
There we go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that recognition, Steve. Very much appreciate it. And Julie, we have a box. So Steve, you want to go right into our technology presentation?
So tonight, we're sharing with you a little bit of what the organization is doing with our technology and the resources that you've given. And I'm going to go back a bit because I can, since I've been here 13 years.
Well, we'll see how far back you're going to go.
I just...
Start out as a child, I'm going to stop.
No, we're only going back 13 years, and I'm not going to spend a long time with that. But it caused us to take a pause and realize that in that time period, a lot of the things that we now take for granted in our organization, we didn't have. You know, we restructured our financial system, and not all of the council and community recognizes or knows this. We had a very nascent website as opposed to where we're going now. We didn't take credit cards. We didn't have online payment. We didn't have near the information accessible and transparent on our website. And I say this only because we've come a long ways with the council's support because it's also one of the ways we stay a lean organization, is to use technology to help us. You know, we're a relatively early adopter with a paperless agenda, but we still, it's not all that old in our system, video web streaming. But tonight, I'm really proud because you're going to see and hear from some of our employees that you don't see every day. And a lot of them are the people that are helping us to make sure that the information that we're using, the technology. So with that, we're going to start with Julie.
You might need to raise that microphone up a little bit.
Good evening, Council and Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council. So tonight, will you go ahead and move it to the next slide? Thank you. Okay. So Target Solutions is an online platform that is used to deliver and track report training and make sure that we are compliant with our state and federal mandates. You guys have also used Target Solutions with your mandatory, your ethics training and whatnot when you come on to be a council member. It also allows our, some of our Public Works folks to continue, do their continuing education for their water certs, wastewater certs and whatnot, online as well. So it's a pretty nice tool that we have, that we can do it right here on site. And then, obviously, the town website is a huge resource. It's our tool for getting the job descriptions out there, the job announcements, the salary schedules. We're required by law to post these things so that we are transparent and that everybody can see what's going on. And so we have everything out there. We are currently undergoing a refresh, so I'm envisioning some new tools that will be coming along with that to help the HR portion of this town website. As far as social media, the town uses our social media to push out the job openings, emergency communications. Parks and Recreation has really taken it to the next level with getting their communications out about their programs and events. So it's really been valuable for that and is only going to keep growing. The Nixle obviously has been very valuable to us these past couple of years with the disasters, the PSPS situations. And obviously, we'll continue to utilize these as needed, which is a huge tool for the town. Office 365, we all use that here in the town. It's saved, it's a time saver for IT not to have to come in and do manual updates all the time. Everything's automatically pushed. We always have the latest and greatest version. And then we have, as I said, we are going to be updating the entire website, which will have not only HR features, but different features for the town as well and residents and citizens to use for getting information. And we just spent a week at a Laserfish conference, which I know that they're going to go into in great detail, but I'm really excited about what that program will bring to HR. I had no idea, besides containing all of our records. Lots of forms and different tracking and different stuff we'll be able to do within that software. And unless you have any questions, that concludes it.
Thank you very much. Any questions from this part one? Thank you, Julie. Who's next? Celia.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So the Finance Department uses technology in a way that tries to promote convenience to internal and external customers. For example, our online utility bill pay system, which has been in place since about 2011, and it lets users pay their bill quickly and easily and securely with a credit card as well as sign up for auto pay, which helps, both of those help avoid late fees, which is nice. So 431 customers, which is about 50% of utility customers, are using online bill pay. And in January, 324 customers, or about 40%, were enrolled in auto pay. So that's a pretty good chunk. The town recently, in 2019, contracted with HDL lodging tax, which allows the secure payment and return of transient occupancy tax returns and taxes to be paid online. And so far, this has seemed to be a pretty successful transition, and I think it's appreciated by the hotels. The Beacon meter reading system, I think this is a good illustration of the evolution of how the town updates processes to use modern technology to improve efficiency. There was a time when staff would literally have a handheld device and a wand to read meters. And then we evolved to reading meters electronically, but we would have to have a device within a certain, you know, range of the meter. And now with Beacon, it reads electronically from a stationary computer. So it just reaches out to Internet and grabs the read, and it has really cut down on time for billing. It used to take days, and now it's a matter of hours that we can produce our billings. And along with that, if you could go back one more slide, that Ion Water is, it works with Beacon to allow utility bill customers to see the information that we see about their meters. And I think that that heightens their awareness of their consumption and could help lead to consumption efforts. We currently have 119 accounts registered with Ion Water. And some other things that we use are CalCard online reconciliation. This allows the users to go online and enter their GL codes and their purchase descriptions. And then everyone that has reconciled online, we can grab a big file of that data and upload it into Springbrook, our financial software, which greatly reduces some manual data entry. I looked at the last bill, and it was 131 lines of data that someone would have previously had to manually key. So that's a time saver for us as well. Springbrook has allowed us, as Steve said, to offer things like payroll direct deposit. Our previous financial software could not produce that file, so we, everybody had to have a paper check. We have direct deposit. We have electronic time card entry, which replaced a paper process. And we are able to do more VRI reporting, which is, it helps us produce financial reports. So going forward, as Julie mentioned, we are going to look at the Employee Self-Service Module, which is a web-based portal for employees that integrates with Springbrook. And we're hoping to look into some more software that integrates with Springbrook for budget building. We currently use four different softwares to compile our budget document. And we are hoping to find a software that will automatically pull data from Springbrook rather than us having to transfer it. It will automatically pull that, which will reduce data entry errors, and it will allow us to take narratives, which are in a Word document, and put them into the same software so then we can, you know, print from one software instead of having four different to compile this document. So hopefully, that will be coming in the future. And if there are no questions, I will pass it to Michelle, I believe.
Any questions about this segment? No?
Thank you.
Michelle?
Thank you. The town clerk, as you know, department or the townwide, has been implementing Laserfish, so I wanted to show a screenshot of what that looks like. On the left-hand navigational bar, you can see that there are department folders, and that's where information will be filed. And the center column is our records retention schedule that was developed by Kaizen and staff. And then on the right is the template metadata fields or the search criteria that staff worked on in developing each department's department file plan. So that, this is our web link to Laserfish. This is just a screenshot that Planning and Building already has their 2019 building permits in the system, and that Public Works has their 2019 encroachment permits. All the information that was in SciTech One Doc Stop for council packets, minutes, ordinances, and resolutions, those have all been migrated forward. And right now, we have a tool that we can export from our Legistar Agenda Management System to Laserfish. So a whole packet goes out into Laserfish. Next slide, please. This is an example of our up-and-coming public portal where the public can search for their records. This will go through a little design change. One, it will coincide with whatever template is decided on for the overall website upgrade and fonts and look and style will mesh with that. If you can go to the next slide, please. And this is an example of one that we really like, the layout, the quintas, and the option for searching, the way the documents are broken down before the main heading categories. So that's what we're getting ready to modify what we have. And our records coordinator, John, he was also at the Laserfish Empower Conference, and he took several classes on how to do that, and he should be able to do that relatively easy, he said. So he's looking forward to doing that part. Next slide, please. This is our DocuSign e-signature process, and this will link together with our Laserfish system for workflows. This is just the main dashboard that we work from, so it helps you know when you have items come in for signature. And it just allows staff to monitor documents that are out for signature. Next slide. This is three screenshots. The first one is, again, a repeat of the dashboard. The second one is the email-looking inbox for DocuSign so you can see what's waiting for you. And then on the right side, our management fellow and records coordinator have created PDFs and uploaded our town contract templates into DocuSign. And we have about 80 hours left on our contract for implementation of Laserfish, and we're hoping to use that to develop workflows for those contracts. And what that means to us is that once town staff has negotiated their agreements with whatever vendor or contractor, they will start it in DocuSign to sign. It'll go through the routing process, and once it's fully executed, the person who originated the document will get a notification. And then it will automatically file into Laserfish. So it will be doing away with the hard copy file. So that's what we're hoping to build, and you will hear from different departments on what they learned at Laserfish and how we can do these electronic workflows to streamline our business practices, eliminate our files, and have everything go into our Laserfish Record Retention Program. Next slide, please.
Before you get off of that slide, if I could ask?
Yes.
We don't have any need for wet signatures that we have historically needed. This is now the new...
I would say the recorded documents is what I would probably still do electronically, and I think, unless you can add anything, Gary?
Yeah. So there are some documents that will be recorded that I think will still require them on occasion.
Right.
There's some original documents the town will still keep, like bonds for Public Works contracts because those need to be original. But generally, and this process does follow both state and federal law that allows for electronic signatures, it's all in compliance with that, so they will work for purposes of just about everything else.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Next. And this is our Yountville municipal code, and you can view that from your desktop or your mobile device. And this is just an example of what the on, the mobile device version looks like. And you'll see the little red triangle on the screen, and that's what they call code alert, and that notifies the public who's looking at that section that council has adopted new ordinance changes. And what we do is we have the code codified twice per year based on our agreement with them. And so this will be included in the next codification, which is sometime in July. Next slide, please. Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Actually, Jacob Solis is going to take the next slide.
Jacob Solis, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm lucky enough to start off the public work portions of tonight's events and go over how we're using technology to not only serve the community but do it more efficiently. As you can see, the first thing I want to talk about is the MyVille app. It's an extremely powerful tool that not only lets the residents and the visitors to town know what the town has to offer, but also lets us know what issues and hazards that the residents and visitors are seeing to tell us, to inform us about them. The first function I'd like to talk about is the reported function. Anyone with a mobile device can go out and take a picture of anything they see that is a hazard or an issue throughout town. They can then write a brief description about it and give me a location and send it to us. We can then send someone out to assess the situation and rectify it. I can then contact whoever sent that issue to us and let them know that, one, we received it, and, two, when it was completed. So that way, they know that we listen to them and do what they see as an issue. On the MyVille app, there is all our public-facing maps, GIS. The public-facing maps are anything that we find interesting or valuable that residents or visitors may want to see. That includes bicycle paths, walking paths, our art walk, EV charging stations, public restrooms, and many more. These maps can also be found on the town website in the GIS section. Anyone can download this app. All you need to do is go to the Google Play Store or the Apple App Store and type in MyVille to download. We are no longer working with Rancho Cucamonga to update and maintain this app. However, we have started a new partnership with one of the original developers of the app to do the maintenance and debugging. Currently, it is going through a maintenance portion, and I hope to have it back up and running very soon. Now, I'm very happy to say that we have an asset management program now. The program is called iWorks. As of two weeks ago, we had only been using it for about two months, and we had done over 306 work orders between MuniOps and utilities. In the iWorks program, we have our equipment such as vehicles, pumps, and motors, anything with a planned maintenance. Those planned maintenance are already programmed in there, so that way we don't have to rely on human memory or just written directions to make sure that we get maintenance done in a timely and efficient manner. Also, iWorks links into our GIS mapping program. Our GIS mapping... Our GIs mapping program is extremely robust. We have most of our assets and utilities marked in there such as street signs, streetlights, our water meters. Pretty much every utility is marked in there. We're going so far as now we have, next on our to-do list is to go out to our parks and do our irrigation sprinkler heads and map those. Once we have all that, we'd be, I think, a hundred percent mapped in utility-wise.
Pretty close. And it's, we, and you can also use that on any smart device. So that's accessible through all of our smart devices, iPads and phones, I believe.
Because it is a web-based application, so any mobile device that can access the web can access the program. Now, I'm really excited about this one. So I've been working with the Sheriff's Department for a parking management app. This app, they'll be able to go out and get a timestamp and location of vehicles, so they can better manage our parking regulations. Now, this app is called Survey 123. It's one of the many apps that is in our ESRI contract already. I learned more about these apps through training and information given by not only the ESRI User Conference but training online that ESRI gives. When I find out more about these apps, I can then bring them to the town. And then we can see about doing more work and doing it more efficiently. Any questions?
Could you map my yard with all those sprinkler heads? I'm having some trouble. I've had some squirrel activity lately.
We, we do have a pretty cool Aero device that increases our mobile's GPS down to subfoot. And so that's how we're going to access our new, you know, the sprinkler heads and the irrigation. So we just connect it to any of our iPads that the guys use out in the field. And then it suddenly becomes subfoot.
I just want to make sure Steve and Gary, I was just kidding. Looking for any favoritism. No.
Well, you can make your backyard a public park.
There you go. Yes, Councilmember Mueller?
All right, so I'm just trying to, this is kind of a leading question. I believe that we're kind of right up there with the technologies. Any of our surrounding up-valley or down-valley cities using this kind of sophisticated equipment?
Well, I know the county has a GIs department. So does, I believe the city of Napa has a GIs department. And I don't know for sure if saying
There's a lot of software buried in this.
Using it, but it is an extremely powerful tool that can do many, many things.
I, I think to answer the question, and I appreciate that, because Councilmember Mueller, Council, GIs is actually used by a number of people.
Right.
What level and where they're going to it and how they're using it and how it's integrated with others. I'm going to say for a community of our size and smaller communities, we are on the leaning edge. And, and again, we, we do make that investment. We do work at it and it is a part of our technique. Certainly for the up-valley cities in this area in Sonoma County. You know, when I actually say small cities, we're really talking about agencies fifty thousand and under. So we, we are certainly, when you look at the combination of what we're doing with our agenda flows, our paperless agenda, Laserfish, some of our other technologies, our online FPP Form 700 documents. The totality is where I think we really look at. And again, and that's why you're seeing, I wanted to make sure that you're seeing different folks because you're seeing who's helping us to do the input, the delivery, and the execution of what we use. You know, and we are a thirty-two employee organization that in many ways is doing way, way more than we did a decade ago.
I would say to answer that question a bit more fine, Rancho Cucamonga is probably one of our peers in the, and how much we're able to use that technology. And, and they're, they were, I think they're license holder number eight, just to give you an example of where they're at. ESRI routinely calls us from the Sacramento office and asks us to participate in conferences and sessions to help other agencies learn how they might be able to use the tool just a little bit better. It's kind of like the Microsoft Office Suite where we all can use it, but some people are super users with Excel. I think we would be considered a super user with GIs with Jacob's help and, and the other help we've had from some of our partners. So we're right out on the edge of people who are pushing the envelope on how to use this product.
Great, that's.
I think it's also important that you also see, product is one thing. You can have a lot of stuff with technology. And I think what's important in the parking management app that Jason just hi, or just highlighted shows the fact that we are, Jacob highlighted, shows the fact that we're designing something to address our immediate and appropriate uses. And then there's others that are transferable as we work on it. So we pull down and look at what's a current issue, what do we need to be doing? The, the same way you saw a whole lot of agency investment. You know, our electronic records management is actually a cultural shift in how we manage our records. It's going to make them all much more accessible. But we're also going through the process of getting everything scanned, coded, put in, so that, you know, in the future you'll be able to see it. But it's fundamentally changing how we save the documents. And not just the agenda process, because a lot of people see that, but there's a lot of other documents that exist that are an important part about how we go about delivering. And this is a great example. This is one where we sat and said, well, what can we do? They pulled up some ideas and there'll be more of those as we go through.
The MyVille app is another great example. I mean, there are several layers. That's a very sophisticated tool. There's a couple of products out there that charge a fairly high fee annually for the, what we call reported feature, see, click, fix. So you would pay an annual fee for that. That's included in, now in our package. And it requires a little bit of maintenance as we're learning, but it generally works fairly well and, and it's included in what we pay for the annual fee once we develop the, the app. So we're going to continue to develop those and, and work that into the business.
You may remember, we were one of the first ten ESRI small agency site licenses, so.
I was going to address that. And Jacob, I appreciate you, you referenced Rancho Cucamonga because they really, I remember when Steve and I were at a League of California Cities Conference in the expo hall. And we're introduced to their program and their willingness to help educate us from seriously day one on technology. And didn't overlook the fact that we're such a small community. They saw how it could be implemented here. I know how they shared their staff to help train us up in those early years. And so now here we are, really sounds like self-sufficient and able to really customize the features like you're saying. So it's been a great learning process from the very beginning.
Yeah, Rancho was a, a very large part in our early development. I knew next to nothing about GIs before. They helped me out and trained me and told me how to actually use it. And yeah, without them, we would not be even a quarter of where we're at right now.
That's great. Do you have anything more to share or are you passing it off to someone else now?
Oh, I think I'm passing it off to Joe.
All right, thank you, Jacob.
Thank you very much for your time.
Well done.
Jake?
In addition to the GIs platform and the work, Asset Management Program, the Utilities Group has been improving their end of the business. And SCADA is one of the things that we've been working on for quite some time, the last few years certainly, and going forward in the next few years. And what this allows us to do is the old, in the old days, it would be a, a board, a, a big metal device. And it would have gauges and papers on it. And you would look at the gauges and papers and then you would go out to the pump or motor and, and make the adjustment. As you can see on this screen, this is an example of one of the basins and, and the, and the valves that are connected to it. So they can make those adjustments from any of their smart devices. So again, going back not even four or five years ago, they carried a beeper and the beeper would go off at their house and it would say there's something wrong and they would have to head out to the plant and see what was going on and then fix it. Now, in most cases, they can either bring it up on their desktop or their iPad or their phone, look at what's going on. And in ninety percent of the cases, fix it from home. Adjust it, address it, and then gives them a little bit of time to go out and see what's going on. It's a real time-saving device. It makes it a much more efficient and effective operation. Our SCADA system now connects to a variety of pumps, motors. It helps with all of our process and makes that process a, a much more finely tuned process. So it helps us work the process to a point where we're using less of everything, less chemical, less power, less, there's less waste and less air on that end. The, because the computer's helping us make those decisions. So overall, it helps, makes us more efficient and effective. But it also helps the plant run just a little bit more efficiently and effectively. And I think, the last thing I want to mention before I pass it off, the Badge and Orion system that Director King talked about earlier, I think we spent the better part of a day with two staff members going through town to read meters. And that was by a vehicle. I don't know how long it took them prior to reading it through a vehicle. And then there were several points in that collection where the device just wasn't reading and they would have to get out of the truck and go and pull the lid off and see what the meter read was. Now, those all read through a, basically a cellphone chip. And it talks to the cloud-based system. It gets that read and then gives the billing system the information it needs. So a lot less, as Director King noted, data entry issues are minimized. But it also gives the customer the ability to set limits on their water usage. So they can say, I, I know how much water I use in a month and I'm going to set it for that amount. And if it starts going over that amount, it'll give them a buzz and let them know there's something going on so that they can be aware, wherever they're at in the world, that there's something going on at their home here in Yountville. We didn't have that capability before. That's one of the technology advances that this system has given us and it, and it continues to improve. And it, I think one of the important side notes is it also helps us with leak detection. So one of the things that this system does is it tells us when there's somebody on the system that's having a leak. So it gives us the top five users, lets us know who has leaks during the day. So we've been chasing those leaks for the past couple of years. And as a result, I think we're down to four or five percent leakage, which is a pretty tight number. All of our out-of-town customers are enrolled in this system as a part of being an out-of-town customer. We've managed to get them all included. And it's amazing how these people use that system to help manage their own water usage. So we have all benefited from that. And if you don't have any questions, I'll turn it over to Parks and Rec, Director Holland.
Any questions on this section?
No, thanks, Jacob. Thanks, Joe.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for entertaining us tonight, letting you know how we do all the things we do with so little staff, right? It's so exciting. So when I started here almost ten years ago, we were processing all of our registration by paper. And so someone would fill out a form and we would put their name on a spreadsheet and we would run their credit card. And then we would work with finance to put that money in. So we integrated with ASAP. It's an online registration software system almost seven years ago now. And to date, we are just in, in last year, because I'm working on the annual report, which you'll see in March. We processed thirty-seven hundred ninety-one registrations last year through that system. Two thousand six hundred and ninety-four resident students since we implemented this system in 2013. And over eight thousand non-resident students. So the system has allowed us to have the amount of growth that we've had in our department without adding full-time staff to facilitate those registrations. So we have gone from, and you'll see in the annual report, from processing about a hundred and nine registrations a month when I first started here, to over a thousand. So I think it's pretty, pretty huge. And I say a thousand because we, we definitely have our high seasons and low seasons, so that's not the average. But it has allowed people to go online and register themselves, both residents and non. It can be used from a desktop or an iPad or a cellphone. Or we, we handle the same thing in person. So there's a lot of specific, and Celia will know all of the terms. If you have questions, she'll come up and help me. But for credit card security. So we all know, we've all probably had our credit cards compromised at this point. I don't know anyone who has not. But there's a lot of requirements as far as credit card security. And so this system allows us to ensure that, that that's consistent through everything that we're doing as well. Next slide, please. So this is an exciting one with Yountville Arts Commission. So last year we integrated a Yountville Art Walk Audio Tour. So with a smartphone or any type of portable device, even an iPad. Each of our plaques has a QR code on it. And so you're actually able to scan the, the plaque. It'll go to the, the Art Walk Audio Tour and it will walk you through that tour. And Joe, if you click on that one that says Faces of Freedom, it may work. Let's see. There was a link in it. Maybe not anymore. Just click on the actual picture. No? Okay, it was going to read to you. Oh, there it is. See, it pops up? And then scroll down?
There we go.
Can you scroll down? And then hit play? We didn't rehearse this.
Sculptor Robert Eccleston, a former Army captain, unveiled Faces of Freedom on Veterans Day, 2018. The granite memorial with metal dog tags honors the five branches of the military and leaves a reflective tag for viewers to picture themselves. It resides appropriately in Yountville's Veterans Park.
So that gives you a kind of a glimpse. And so this is something we've been looking at for several years, but the cost of implementing something like this was very high. Until we found this vendor. And so although it's not a real person's voice, it's obviously a computer-generated voice. It's something that we achieved for twenty-nine dollars a month.
Wow.
That's pretty huge, right? It does take time. The commissioners are in charge of updating it and you type in the information. But we brought something to the art walk that we've been trying to do, but obviously, cost was an issue. And so every month we get to track how many people are actually going to that. You can also access it from our website. And so we see anywhere from a hundred and about a hundred and twenty users a month to our high season, which was actually during the V Foundation Week, interestingly enough. I think a lot of people were walking town and it was fairly new at that point. We saw well over four hundred, so. So it's pretty exciting. And like, even back to the, the registration software in this, so many of these new technologies, you get such great data from too. So I can print reports and I can look at things very, very much based on statistics that without these, we wouldn't able, wouldn't be able to do. Next slide. So obviously, as noted before, when Julie was speaking, we highly use social media. So the town has its own Facebook. Its own Facebook. But the town has just over twenty-five hundred followers, followers currently on Facebook. Obviously, it was interesting and we talked about it after some of our natural disasters that we've had, the, the amount of interaction and engagement on our website just skyrockets. So it was interesting to see how much of an impact social media can make during an emergency, not just on your day-to-day fun, you know, class or something like that. Parks and Recreation is definitely one of the higher users of our, our Facebook page. We post a lot. And it's not just to market our programs. It's also to engage people in what's going on here in town and engage partners too. So a lot of times you'll see us cross-promote something the chambers posted or the chamber, you know, cross-promote something we've done as well. Yountville Arts also has its own Facebook page with just over a thousand followers. And that is run by one of their commissioners with two hours a week from one of my part-time staff. So having, you know, we always talk about how much the Art Commission is that doing group as opposed to more of a policy direction group. But that's one of the ways that they really are doing is, is handling the majority of that social media. We also have Instagram. So Parks and Recreation has its own Instagram that's fairly new. We have two hundred and sixty-eight followers. And Yountville Arts has a hundred and fifty-nine followers. So Instagram is very much visual. You know, Facebook, you can have pictures and videos and a lot of text, whereas Instagram, you're very limited to the amount of text you can have. So it's very visually engaging. And you see a lot of, a lot of it, and I'm still learning the jurgens, but a lot of it's tagging and, and how you how you not just get followers, but other businesses and organizations that are liking what you're doing and then their people can see it. And so we have a pretty, we're gaining reach. And again, Yountville Arts is solely managed by their, the commissioners. And our Parks and Recreation page is managed by our internal staff. Do I have any more slides? No. Okay. Do you have any questions for me?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Very thorough. Thank you very much. Sandra's on the way.
Well, that one was way too much fun. Now we're back to planning and building. But we're really excited because we're one of the last ones to implement technology. And yet we're ones to, that are poised to benefit the most from. And yet we're ones to, that are poised to benefit the most from it. We've historically been a really document-heavy, paper-heavy department. And digitizing our records will just be ease in accessing those documents and ease of the public users in submitting information. So Iwork is our new, um, online permitting system for planning, public works and, and include code enforcement too. And it'll allow an applicant to submit their application online, to upload their supporting documentation and drawings and to pay their fee online. Once it comes into our system, there's an automated workflow that will push it out to planning, building and public works for review and offer comment, and that's all done electronically. Oh, I lost my train of thought. So go back. And what it does is it creates a, um, sort of a digital repository by address for all of the documents associated with a property. And so we can look at code enforcement or building or planning. And so the ease of use will be there. Um, it also allows us to track databases for such things as the contractors working in town. And we can compare that against, um, built, uh, business licenses. It, as Jacob mentioned, is linked to GIS. So we'll be able to create maps that show all the tree removal permits in town or all the code enforcement activities or, um, simply, um, the entitlement process for planning applications. So our goal is to do a soft launch the first six months of this year and start with easy over-the-counter building, um, permits. Get the public used to using the system, um, and then fully launch within, by end of year. During this transition period, we'll have support at the front counter where we can walk applicants through how to submit for those who are uncomfortable or just not used to it. And really help the public understand how this will, um, benefit all of us. So we're really excited and maybe just those volumes of paper will finally have a chance to go away. Um, moving on, we also have created some digital forms for parking inspections. And so when the crew goes out to, to look at the different lots, they have, um, this information where they can collect standardized metrics, that they collect all the same information when they go. They can take photos and upload it. And then it creates this, um, data that over time, we can see how well a business is doing or not. And it allows us to do our enforcement better. Um, again, there's no paper. Moving on, we are also excited about the Laserfish implementation through the public works, um, through the clerk's office. And we see it as an opportunity to have links on our planning and building page where an applicant can click the link, fill out a tree removal application, a pod permit, um, and fill it out and submit it and pay the fee really simply. So we are very excited about all these things and we're in the process of implementing them.
Question. Is it the, um, permit applicant's responsibility to have something like that printed out so that if someone is challenging them, they have a permit? Or they could call it up on their mobile device, they still have the document that they could show that they have whatever?
Yes. So when they get a permit, it'll create that permit, we'll push it out to them, give them a hard copy. Um, that's used for, um, the job card and final inspections. Um, so there is a little bit of a dual process.
I think the process has been posting, whether it's permits, I'm thinking ABC licenses, but we've talked about having visual representation of a renovation of a parcel, uh, something like that. That will now be digital and available. And if we choose to, we could still put a hard copy on a fence at a park that's being renovated or something.
Yes, yes. Doesn't entirely eliminate, um, all the paper, but it reduces the amount of it and, um, essentially establishes or, or produces an official form that they, they use.
Great. I think one of the things that hopefully you're also seeing is that a, a lot of this is, especially when it comes to forms and stuff like that, it's improving customer and user ease. A, a lot of people like to work on their stuff at home in the evening and then they can fill it out, complete it. It also has the ability to result in less errors because, you know, if the form requires six things to be filled out, you have to fill out all of them in order to hit submit for it, to take it. So it's going to improve some staff efficiency and operations. Hopefully tonight's presentation gives you a good cross-section about how this organization is using the investment that you have shared and given with us. So we're excited to show you what we're doing. And I also think it goes a lot to, when we talk about our organizational culture, the tools we're giving and the opportunity for people to be creative and, and play with some of these things. So, um, we're excited. Uh, we look forward to what the future and not-so-far future is going to deliver.
Thank you. Uh, questions from council? Vice Mayor?
Um, thank you all for the presentation. Very exciting stuff. Um, and I don't know if this is more for the town manager or the town clerk, but could you just, for the folks watching, um, and for our residents, explain how this really helps our residents access and, and find more transparency in our processes? Because when I took the initial Laserfish, Laserfish training, that was what struck me about what now a resident can find from all of this.
I'll let Michelle go first.
Thank you. Really, a lot of our information is in hard copy now and it was in a, uh, One Doc Stop. It didn't have a public portal accessibility, so now this new Laserfish does have it. So you will have all, I don't know if I'm answering it correctly, but we have all of our resolutions, ordinances and minutes from incorporation to present time in Laserfish. They migrated over from One Doc Stop. We also, where we have council packets, those are all, um, migrated over. They won't be from beginning of incorporation, cause different, different staffing at different times compiled those agenda packets differently. Um, in what I think is great that our records coordinator brought back from the Laserfish and Power Training is, what will be new for us is searching and using advanced search techniques. However, what he learned at his training is that when we set up our public portal and it says minutes or resolutions, they can click into that box and search just in that box for their information. It won't, this system is so powerful. If you search for water, it would bring up every document that had water in it, from our minutes, from our staff reports, from other departments. And so then it would be an overwhelming amount of information. So what our records coordinator learned is that you can focus these fields to either do a global search across all document types or individual resolution ordinance minute items that you're looking for. Do you need more information?
No, that's very helpful. Just, I just wanted to, to give folks an idea of this is going to provide a searchable database of so many of our documents.
Yeah, just from, just from your computer at home.
But I also want to really stress, Vice Mayor Dorman, that's a, a great segue. The website, the town's website serves as an entry place for people that are looking for information. For example, our budget is online. A lot of the, um, a lot of studies in supporting documents that support decisions you're making, evaluations, our general plan, the Envision Yountville Process, all of our job descriptions, my employment agreement. All of the, all of these things, and that's why I'm saying it's really a culmination of the two in terms of how we're trying to present it. And the, the objective is also that the more information we can put online, it helps people do what they're doing. They can research. We have information on, you know, um, fence heights. There's a brochure. So our challenge right now in our, um, website update is how we sometimes have to take a step back and look at it. We're familiar with it, but what's the right terminology? Because I'll, I'll use a hypothetical, you know? Somebody might say, well, I want to pay my water bill. Somebody else might say, I want to pay my utility bill. Somebody will think, well, that's really clear. You go to finance. Well, we just identified three different places that in a person in their definition. And what we need to try to do is figure out how to link that so that a person looking to do that can find that. And, and that's where we're really headed, I think, with a lot of the, the systems is that it'll be more familiar to what the person is looking for than necessarily the context. But we really want to steer people to use www.townofyountville.com because it really is their access point to almost any bit of information. And, you know, if you go look at what we have there, i- it's just a very comprehensive, um, sense of information about what we're doing, meetings, activities, the fun stuff, the studies. Um, and we, we can't make all of that we do in government exciting like Parks and Rec, but we're really working our best to, to do it in a few other areas.
I think one thing to point out too is currently we, um, scan all of our documents or most of them in PDFs and we upload them to our different pages. Um, as we go through our website update and start learning more about Laserfish, we may perhaps be able to do a link instead of scanning a separate, separate document. There may be some integration that helps us do that more efficiently or maybe it will keep things current. I don't know, but we're, there's lots of new things for us to look at and how it's gonna, you know, the records are gonna integrate with the new website and accessibility.
And I think from a practical standpoint, you take a simple council item. It may have, let's say it's a public works site and we're going to build a path, hypothetical, cause we just approved it. Well, finance needs a portion of the contract for a certain reason. The clerk needs it as the official record of what the council did with it. Public Works is using it to management. So if you imagine an old traditional approach, they'd each have a file cabinet with that document in it. And where we're headed now is there'll be an electronic file cabinet that they can pull, get the information. So finance gets the part that they need from managing the financial aspect. Public Works has it there, the official document. And that's where just some of the real efficiencies of, when you start thinking about as we grow and having that, um, you know, so we're kind of excited about that. It is a little on the nerdy side, so I will apologize on that. But it really is, the other thing we're finding is homeowners really appreciate it because to the extent that we can have historical copies of building permits and things that happened in their home, you know, they find that a useful tool. Um, so we're really trying to do some things that are, are helpful, um, even though in some cases that's a fairly expensive proposition for us to go back and scan some of those things that go back forty-five and fifty years.
Do we, do we have a schedule on, uh, website redesign, launch?
We're anticipating summer, end of summer of 2020.
The unmiked answer was summer of 2020. Thanks Julie. Yeah, Councilor Mueller?
So, uh, or is all this new software residing on a server or does it go to the cloud?
I think most of, most of it is the cloud, is what I'm understanding.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about increasing servers or any of that stuff. It's all cloud-based.
Correct.
Well, great.
Any member of the public have a question or comment on the presentation on technology? Yes, Dennis. Need you to actually come up to the mic so we can get you, so everybody can hear. Remember, we're worldwide here.
I know. Dennis Keller, 1984 Adams. Well, the technology as far as permits are concerned, will it be retroactive or would it be just going forward?
Moving forward.
It's just moving forward. Okay, so, okay, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Bruce?
Thank you. I'm taking a lot of notes. It sounds neat. They're gonna be a plan maybe through a newsletter to educate us as to what all the features are?
No.
That'll be available?
Good. Just kidding.
Good.
We always over-inform, Bruce.
Okay, thank you.
You'll hear it on many different platforms, I think mostly tech, uh, digitally. But we know that we have a diverse population that receives information differently. So, um, our staff will continue to do all that outreach. Yes. Uh, thank you. That's, uh, great to hear. And there's a reason that, uh, everyone in the photo that received the, uh, award earlier was here tonight to make this presentation. It shows the kind of team effort that we have and often it, it doesn't get seen by the public. So not only is it good to see all of you in person, but it's good to see all of the, um, advanced work that you're all doing to, to make things run so well. So thank you all very much for that, even those hiding in the very back. Thank you. Uh, with that, I think we have wrapped up the technology update. Uh, we have no public hearings on item eight. We'll go to the first of our two administrative regular items, which is, uh, consideration of, uh, changing the fine structure for stopping, standing and parking.
Yes, Mayor and Council.
Sounds like our attorney.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, so before you tonight is a resolution that increases the fine and penalty for violations of chapter ten point two eight, which regulates stopping, standing and parking of vehicles throughout town, mostly on public streets, but also in private parking lots. Um, it posted specifically for disabled parking. Um, this has actually been a two-step process. You might recall in 2017 that ten point two eight was significantly updated to create new violations that appear in the vehicle code but needed to be mirrored in the municipal code so that they could be enforced locally. And, and those are found in ten point two eight point, I think O two O, but there's a long list of them and they're in your staff report, um, that are identified there. Uh, we went back and forth on how much to include in the staff report for the specific violations. Ten point two eight's a long chapter, and so we could have listed many, many pages of different violations. We highlighted the most recent ones that the council adopted and also highlighted a few other ones, uh, for information. So for violations of stopping, standing and parking, they are set by you, the council, as are other fines. There's a slightly different process though in the vehicle code for challenging these violations. So it's not like other administrative enforcement or code enforcement that the town does elsewhere. These tickets are issued, um, by the Napa County Sheriff as the enforcement agency for the town. There's a process, a two-step process for challenging them. First through the data processing, um, center and then also then to the Napa County Sheriff. Portion of those tickets goes to the state court fund and other funds and don't actually make it back to your coffers. So really this is about enforcement and not about revenue raising. Um, so as far as increasing this to a hundred, um, after the new provisions went in in 2017, which was very helpful for enforcement, it was discovered that the actual fines for current parking and standing and stopping violations in Yountville are relatively low to other jurisdictions in the county. And so with that in mind, we worked with Sergeant Holman and then Napa County Sheriff's Office on what a sufficiently high amount would be to deter this behavior. That's how the hundred dollars was set. And, um, that's also the same, uh, level fine for other violations of the municipal code. So that's the base level for all other violations too. So it's in line with what's charged for other first violations. Uh, so with that, it's a, a vote of, of the council on this resolution and I'm happy to answer any questions or Steve has anything to add.
I just want to amplify, this is not a revenue generating source. So when people are looking at this, this is actually about having a deterrent that is effective and works. Um, in hearing from our, uh, law enforcement and folks in the street, for example, somebody parking illegally in the French Laundry, uh, often told a deputy, oh, you know, for thirty dollars, that's cheaper than parking in the city. Go ahead and leave the ticket. So it's really about a reasonable amount. And I do want to stress, we only get about thirty percent of the fine amount back, as Gary alluded to, the, the state through the court system. And also this is, the, the way the town's structured, this is managed under our contract with Napa County Sheriff. So actually this is an offset into our, um, contract amount. Um, I want you to realize we received a whole three thousand two hundred and seventy dollars last year is our share of revenue. We don't anticipate writing more tickets. You all get a report quarterly and you see the balance of education versus, um, actual tickets. But what we do know is that as we, as we see and hear from residents expecting a higher level of enforcement, uh, for example, we've written several limos and buses that are parking in violation of the new signs. It needs to be an effective deterrent because, and I'm, I'm still gonna say the hundred dollars is, uh, for some folks that may have had some illegal experiences in San Francisco, it still comes away as very reasonable, but we think it's a good step forward. We also don't want it to be so burdensome, but we do need, um, you know, um, we have employees that typically are part of our violators, the occasional guest, as well as the occasional resident.
Questions about the report? I have a quick question. It lists, the town also prohibits following activities using public streets for storing cars more than seventy-two hours. Uh, do we need to have that cars mean something more than just cars? Vehicles, trailers?
Mobile homes.
Yeah, something even beyond vehicles. We have trailers, we have, um, other mobile?
So I don't believe that's a direct quote. So that's a summary.
Staff report.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's to summarize a municipal code provision. And that's likely more limiting than, than the municipal code, but I can take a moment and look it up if you'd like.
I remember a conversation, mainly that. I remember a conversation, mainly that came up with mobile, you know, RVs that were being parked for many days or even weeks on the street. But we recognized that there are some trailers and some other types of vehicles, recreational and otherwise, they were also being basically stored on, on public streets. So just so we can clarify that.
Most of the code refers to vehicle.
Yeah, the municipal code prohibits, excuse me, storing a vehicle or a recreational vehicle and parking it on a street or alley for more than seventy-two consecutive hours, so cars is a number.
Great, thank you. Other questions, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thank you for the report. So we do not anticipate writing more tickets. Do we anticipate writing less tickets because, or fewer tickets? Because I, I just want to make sure we don't get into a situation where when we go from thirty dollars to a hundred dollars, we then write fewer tickets because it is a bigger?
I, I think the first thing I'm gonna say is, again, you see the reports. We do try to educate. I'm not gonna be able to say that it's going to be, because if the people do dumb stuff in front of our deputies, the deputies are gonna write them a ticket, potentially, you know, depending on where it's at. So I will also say, you know, as I shared with you, this is not a big revenue generator. So it's not like we're anticipating, it's not like parking meters where you're going out and you're trying to, you know, when somebody is not turning over. This is for the existing things that we're having some pushback on, and it also relates as we move into our three-hour pilot program with our three-hour limited parking. So I, I think, I, I don't, you know, I don't see it as, we don't quantify. You know, the deputies do not have a target or a quota by which they are expected to achieve. So I, I don't, I think we'll have to watch that, Vice Mayor, but I don't, it's not, it's not a financial. This is not a, this is not a revenue enhancement move, this is an enforcement mechanism move.
Right, no, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at it as revenue at all. I'm asking, I just want to make sure that when a ticket is appropriate, a ticket will be given as it always have, regardless of the fact that it is now more expensive to the violator.
I can absolutely assure that, because in talking with Sergeant Holman, they've actually encouraged this because for them, you know, it's, it also, like I say, it potentially allows us some offset for the increase, but of staff time to do that. So yes, I think, again, appropriate violators are going to receive, you know, whether it's a first time in the database, databases are helpful, or if it's somebody they've seen familiar. As many of you know, Yountville's a small town, and if you become a frequent violator, that becomes pretty well-known by, by the staff fairly quickly.
Councilor Dur, did you have?
That, he answered it, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Members of the public, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain either further discussion or action. I just want to make one quick comment. When I read the town's not updated the fines for parking violations in over twenty years, you had me then, so it makes sense. I mean, it's, like Steve said, it's almost foolish to expect people to conform when it's such a minimal cost. Any other discussion, or is there action?
I'll make a, make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty dash three nine seven three, establishing civil violations and fines for violations of chapter ten point two eight of the Yountville Municipal Code. YMCA stopping, standing, and parking.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission appointments. Michelle, would you give a report on our earlier interviews, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The town recruited for three regular members on the commission and one high school student member. We received five applications for the three regular member positions and no applications for the high school representative. So we will continue to recruit for that. Council interviewed the applicants earlier this evening, and the council member Dorr and Becker is excused, and council member Durham, he was unable to attend the interview, so he abstained from voting. So the three council members here now ranked Carol Schamang as the first choice, Alan, or Paul Marsiniak, second choice, Alan Tenscher, third choice, and then there was a tie for the, for Margaret and Michelle. So with that, we need three appointments to the Park and Rec Advisory Commission, and we ask that you make that motion based on those results.
Thank you. And before I ask for action, I want to recognize that it's always nice to have more people than there are spaces, which makes it a little bit tricky for us, but also that we had, we had five qualified candidates also, which makes it easier and difficult for us at the same time. But thank you to all that showed interest in that. So any further discussion? Is there action?
I'll make a motion that we approve the candidates as listed by our town clerk in order. Second.
So that'll be, that would be Carol Schamang, Alan Tenscher, and Paul Marsiniak as the three that would be appointed?
To a two-year term due to expire January twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. So there's a motion and a second to that effect, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
One abstention. They are reappointed to the commission, so thank you very much for your continued interest. Moving on to staff informational reports, do we have any?
No additional reports tonight.
Thank you. Council meeting reports, comments, and other. We'll start with upper value waste management authority.
We had a meeting on February the tenth, and at that meeting, our, we are, as I mentioned before, working on renewing our contract contracts. We haven't made a final decision there. So the major item that was on that meeting that we wanted to discuss with the rest of the board was a new proposal that we've been working on for setting how we determine rates. And it was, and we want to thank our attorney, Mr. Bell, who also served as our consulting attorney on this project, and it was well-received. The, we had one hundred percent agreement between the JPA members that it was a new streamlined approach, and they were ready after, let's see, twenty, thirty years now to maybe make a change. So a lot of progress, so we'll be, now that we have concurrence with the, the company and our board, we'll be moving on to some of the other more regulatory-type aspects of the contract.
Thank you.
So stay tuned for that.
Next up, and we do have a couple that we'll be adding to this list, but next up, the Cannabis Standing Committee. Vice Mayor and I held that committee meeting last Thursday? Thursday, Friday, Thursday afternoon, and we had a fairly full house in here. We have three folks that were all with us that afternoon in the audience. The main focus of the conversation was for the Standing Committee to discuss and eventually agree that we would be making a recommendation to the full council at a future meeting, and our recommendation, now, can I make that announcement, Gary? Now I can still say what we did even though we have an agendized action. So that we, we are recommending that we place an initiative on the ballot in November related to the cannabis retail permit process and the possibility of having one in town. We believe that the full council will be able to take this up on our agenda for the March third meeting. Assuming we are all present, one of the things that we committed to is making sure that all five council members are part of that decision to consider a ballot measure. And I believe, Steve, you said that you believe that by the first or maybe second meeting in April, we could potentially have that initiative language written for presentation to the council and the public.
Yes, I think, you know, based on feedback and direction first from the council, and then that would be sufficient time. We anticipate the ZODO update on the first meeting in April, so I think consistent of trying to make sure we don't overload the agendas, the cannabis draft ordinance language for the potential ballot language would be on the April twenty-first agenda.
Okay, and as part of that process, I know we could let our three folks that are here in the audience, as well as anyone listening, that there will be, as there always is, the ability to have public interaction about what's being proposed. I don't know that the Standing Committee will meet again. This may go just directly to the full board, but if there is the need to have a Standing Committee meeting to potentially vet a draft of that and then bring it to the full council, we'll do that. The public will certainly be able to engage in the initiative that has been worked on by, already worked on, but finalized by town attorney and town manager by then. So there will be an opportunity for the public to, to weigh in on that initiative language. That's all we really talked about, I think. Vice Mayor, do you have anything additional from that meeting?
Nothing additional, I just, I want to repeat what the mayor just said in a slightly different way. This is a two-step process. On March third, we will bring the recommendation to the council, whether or not there should be a ballot initiative. And then at a later meeting, likely April twenty-first, will be the second step, where the council will actually take up the ballot and the ordinance, if there is an ordinance language. So it's, it's a two-step process we're looking at.
And there would be time, because there's not a deadline to submit an initiative for a few more months, there would be time that if the council receives a draft and needs, or wants to modify that, there would be time to do that.
Yes.
It doesn't have to all happen in the, in a single meeting.
It will not be, we have timed this sufficiently. Having said that, you don't have like all year. You do have until early June to make that decision.
Right. We want to make sure we get to it as quickly as possible for consideration. Okay, that's the Standing, the Cannabis Standing Committee report for today. We have a Parking Ad Hoc Committee report?
Yes, we do. The date we met was,
Valentine's Day.
It was Valentine's Day, thank you, no wonder, I couldn't remember. It was, doesn't have a number, it's Valentine's Day.
Room was filled with love, that's why.
That's right, it was a lot of love. So, Councilmember Durham and I are the two representatives on the Parking Committee. We decided that it would be best to kind of have a stakeholders' meeting, and we had a very large representation from many different businesses in town, as well as Whitney from the Chamber, and resident, very interested residents as well. The main focus of the meeting was to discuss parking. We gave, our town manager gave them an update on what we've done so far in front of South Side and Vandeler Park and Washington Park, I mean Veterans Park. But the main focus was parking options around Yountville Community Park. And briefly, I would say that there is definitely general consensus, even among some reluctant residents, about the west side of the park, doing angled parking over there. There was a lot more resistance from mainly the residents regarding having a one-way on the east side of the park. So I think overall, you know, and then, again, some of our residents were voiced a lot of concern about making any changes to the park. So I think it's something that, you know, a lot of the council people probably heard before. So I think that will be the direction we'll be moving in, is making more decisions with our businesses about the west side of the park parking, and probably little to no emphasis on changing the east side to one-way. Anything else, Councilmember?
You noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the light came up again.
Okay.
Yeah. I want to make sure I got that on the record.
There you go. Complete report.
Yeah.
Is there an emergency preparedness ad hoc committee report?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham, did you have a Yountville Elementary School Sculpture Ad Hoc Committee report?
I do. One thing I've learned in my four-plus years here is that the wheels of government move at a glacial pace, but when you get a Yountville Arts Commission and School Committee group together, it moves. So action was taken at the meeting last week for art, for an art installation to come into Yountville to engage an artist, to start the process, to get a piece of art, to give Yountville Elementary School the proper recognition it deserves moving forward in the future. So very excited about that. So we'll have, a lot of activity is taking place for the, to happen before the school party, May twenty-ninth. So we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Speaking of Yountville Elementary School, Town Manager, Vice Mayor and I did meet with senior staff of the Unified School District. Unfortunately, Dr. Masetti, the superintendent, was unavailable to meet due to another obligation in Southern California. But we did get an update on the status of the process that the district is going through, both with the potential relocation of the charter school that they are responsible for finding a campus, Stonebridge Elementary, and also with the process they have to reactivate the seven-eleven committee that would be evaluating the available parcels owned by the district for potential sale and the disposition of those properties. It's too early to really have much feedback, is basically the message we left with. I know they released some information about appraisals and what they apparently thought was a possibility for the future. We let them know that neither of those was valid or accurate. And so, you know, I've certainly heard, and I have a feeling others have, that when they see in the paper that the district says they're gonna sell it for a certain amount and build a bunch of homes on it, we say, that's not going to be up to you. And so the town really has the authority to manage that. That process will be still happening going forward. We also have an interest in protecting, not only the asset as a part of our community, but the type of use going forward. So Vice Mayor, did you have anything further?
We do have, we will have another meeting with staff and hopefully Dr. Masetti, probably within the next six weeks or so, and so then we should hopefully have another report out.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did, I mean, it's, it's curious that they did rush out and get an appraisal. Have they, was there any discussion about declaring this property surplus land yet?
Not yet, it's.
Too premature?
It is premature, and what they tell us, it's premature in their process. They still have to reconvene the seven-eleven committee to evaluate the properties and make a recommendation to the board for action.
So the board is gonna make the decision whether it's surplus land?
Ultimately, based on the recommendation from the seven-eleven committee, yes.
Good, thanks.
I believe our Vice Mayor is still an alternate on that seven-eleven committee. So that is the report from that meeting. Another addition, before I get to the League of California Cities update, is that I will be part of a meeting on Monday, February twenty-fourth, with administration from Calvet to discuss the master plan that they had done recently. I believe the Vice Mayor and Town Manager are going to be attending a meeting that was called by Congressman Thompson and other officials that will be happening on the twentieth. So we should have some information to report out as it relates to our collaboration with the Veterans Home as they look at their future master plan. Okay, so bear with me on, there's been quite a bit of activity with the new legislative cycle in twenty twenty in the League of California Cities. This is what happens when you're the president of the organization, you have a lot of obligations, but they're very informative and helpful for us locally. I did spend two days, last, about three weeks ago, on Capitol Hill in Washington DC, meeting with other, about two dozen other presidents of state leagues and their executive directors. We spent a day and a half traveling with our colleagues from Washington State, Oregon, Nevada, and Mississippi. And we met as part of the National League of Cities Congressional Fly-In, is what they call it, where we go and advocate with our legislators about state and local issues. The four main areas that we focused on were transportation infrastructure, workforce development, broadband or five G rollout, and accessibility, as well as safe and clean drinking water. broadband or 5G rollout and accessibility, as well as safe and clean drinking water infrastructure. If, if everyone recalls, that time of January, it was busy in Washington, DC. We had five senators scheduled to meet with us. They were all busy with an impeachment vote, so we had meetings with their staff instead. But we did meet with staff from, senators from Washington, Mississippi. We also met with Senator Kamala Harris's staff and Senator Dianne Feinstein's staff. We did have meetings directly with Congressman Mike Thompson and Nevada Congressman Mark Amodi. So it was good to get a pulse of Washington. One of the challenging themes that we heard was some in Washington see when states find resources like California did with Senate Bill One to fund transportation and road reconstruction, they then think, "Oh, well, the state doesn't need our help, so we'll, we'll put that federal money somewhere else." So it's a little discouraging to hear that, and so we have to keep reminding our colleagues and the federal government that the state and local governments not only need your help, but that's kind of what their job is supposed to be about. I'll be going back to DC, March seventh through the eleventh, for another National League of Cities conference. It'll be a Congressional City Conference for more advocacy and individual meetings, as well as some educational sessions. Just heard today that Speaker Pelosi is one of the confirmed speakers for that conference. I'm sure she'll have a few things to share. Also, we just held the league, the California League just held a webinar on housing last week that was a preview for our Board of Directors. We have the opportunity to host our State Board of Directors this week here in Yountville. We have about seventy board members and staff coming to stay here in town and meet for two days about all of our strategic priorities, housing, homelessness, public safety, pension reform, and environmental quality, resiliency, and emergency preparedness will be the principal topics for that board meeting, with probably housing being the number-one top issue. I also attended, as did several of my colleagues here and our town manager, the league's Academy for New Mayors and Council Members in Sacramento. Town manager and I were a panel presenting on the relationship between city managers and council. So that was not only fun, but I think hopefully educational for, for the couple hundred new electeds that were in the audience. Also, spent a full day in the Capitol, meeting with members of the governor's staff on the legislative activity that's happening. A lot of folks know SB One, Senate Bill, or I'm sorry, SB fifty. Senate Bill Fifty was a very big housing bill from San Francisco, former San Francisco council member and Senator Scott Weiner. That failed its vote, but there is still significant pressure to come up with housing legislation this year, so those conversations will continue. There is a new legislative cycle underway with a lot of bills coming our way, so those of us on policy committees will also keep everyone updated. Any additional comments from league activity, Vice Mayor, or, no? Yes? Please, yeah, Association of Bay Area Governments.
And it's, it's interesting as, and maybe I'm the nerd, I am the nerd. It's interesting as I hear all of these various reports, how they all dovetail together, because I attended the Association of Bay Area Governments General Meeting, and it was all about housing. And one of the speakers in the morning panel was Senator Weiner. And the takeaway was, there will be housing bills, and housing is going to be very high on everyone's agenda. They talked, which was interesting and I thought somewhat helpful about, they understand, beginning to understand, not all towns and cities are the same. They're gonna, they want to offer package solutions, a package of solutions, legislative toolbox. There are new housing allocation numbers coming down. There is more money available, and today I did attend a League of California Cities webinar on a bucket of money called LEAP, which, some of that will be coming to Yountville as of right to help us with our housing planning. So it's, it's all coming together, but yes, housing is just a really big thing.
Yes, thank you. The last, very brief reports and announcements. I want to acknowledge a very successful third year for the Yountville International Short Film Festival. They managed to get through the fourth day with intermittent power outages, thanks to a tree limb that blew onto a power line in Yountville Community Park that very windy day. But great attendance, and I think it really went very well, so kudos to them. Also, I want to recognize Jennifer Brewster and the Tuck McGraw Foundation, who worked with Lionsgate Movie Studio to host a World War II film, the screening of the, of Midway. And also, a very well-deserved recognition of World War II veterans that are, are either living at the Veterans Home or had the ability to come and attend that event. I know, I saw, the Vice Mayor was there, and Councilmember Dorn Becker was there as well. Had a lot of folks from, locals were there at the Lincoln Theater, so it was very well-received, and some senior military officials were also present. So that was really a wonderful event. Also, I'll be speaking tomorrow at the Veterans Home as part of Black History Month activities. They've been doing this for several years up at the home, so I look forward to that tomorrow. Any other reports? Okay, with that, that takes care of all of our business tonight. We are going to be going into closed session. Do we have any reportable action anticipated? We do not, but we'll go into closed session now. We will then, after that, adjourn to our next regular meeting of Tuesday, March third. So now we'll go into closed session. Thank you.